I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the January 7th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that we gather today on the ancestral homelands of indigenous people who have lived in the Salish Sea Basin and the North Cascades watershed from time immemorial, including Lummi Nation, Nuksek, Semiamu, and Samish tribes. Other announcements and upcoming meetings. Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. Also, a public hearing is currently scheduled for January 28th, 2019, but will be rescheduled to February 11th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers. The public hearing will be on the proposed resolution of the Bellingham City Council, providing for the city to partially relinquish a general utility easement retained in Ordinance 6882, which is located in a vacated alley between Ferry Avenue and Adams Avenue. And if you can join me, if you can stand, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Terri Borneman.
Here.
Michael Lillquist.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
April Barker.
Here.
Hannah Stone.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Okay. We have no public hearing for this evening, so we'll begin our regular pub-public comment period, and Elizabeth Oaks will read the first three names. If we can just queue up our speakers over along the wall there, that'd be great.
First three speakers are Ann Mackey, Harlow Friday, and Bridget Reeves.
Good evening. My name is Ann Mackey. I live in the York neighborhood. At your last meeting of 2018 on December 13th, I spoke about the importance of trying to get the Bellingham School District to relocate its bus barn off of Watcom Creek, which is located in the York neighborhood. That same day, Governor Inslee announced an unprecedented investment to save the southern resident orcas. As his statement said, "Without taking bold actions and drastically changing human impact to our environment, these animals may not survive." He stated, "We are undertaking Herculean effort to save these iconic creatures. It will take action at every level of the environment across our entire state. We need to restore the ecosystem to one that sustains orcas, salmon, and the quality of life for all Washingtonians." I bring this to your attention because I believe a Herculean effort is needed now to prevent the school district from investing $3.5 million to rehab the current bus barn on Watcom Creek. Inslee has proposed $363 million budget for salmon recovery, culvert removal, water quality, and water supply projects that will expand and improve salmon habitat across the state, and that is only a portion of this budget. Salmon live and thrive in Watcom Creek. We must do more, we must do better, to be part of this Herculean effort. And I believe 78 diesel buses parked on that creek for another many years to come is not a good idea. They've been there for 60 years, and I urge the city to go back to the drawing board with the school district and try to rediscover some alternative locations, working together as part of this statewide effort. Perhaps this is an opportunity for collaboration between the state, the city, and the schools to relocate the bus barn. Tomorrow night, the York Neighborhood Association will host a public meeting with two administrators from the school district to discuss these issues, and I want to thank them for taking the time to come to the neighborhood and be part of this ongoing discussion. And I hope that some of you on the council will also join us. Michael Lillquist has RSVP'd that he plans to attend. York began proposing the action in 2010 as a means to regain access to the creek at this location, to install creekside trails, create a park, and provide opportunity for housing infill along the street at that location, and we are even more motivated now. Thank you, and I'm going to give you copies of our flyers for the meeting tomorrow night.
My name is Harlow Friday. I live at 3125 Meridian Street. I've met several of you before. I'm pleased to say I've met you, and I want to talk tonight about a DADU, detached additional dwelling unit, which I've talked to you about two or three times, but it was not yet a detached DADU. It was, in fact, an RV parking garage with an office. Well, since then, and during the time that we've talked about it, I've talked to a lot of people around the Planning Department and in the city and various places and so forth, and I said, "How would you like to have this unit," I took a picture of it, "located 10 feet from your backyard?" And everybody said, "Well, we wouldn't like that to a man or to a woman." Nobody really wanted to have it located 10 feet from their backyard. This RV garage office was finalized, was finalled on New Year's Eve, when they got their final, final stuff, and at that time, it was finalled without storm, without stormwater and without driveway problems being taken care of. It's kind of amazing to me that you can finalize without stormwater finals. The maximum impermeable surface was, was met, and now it's coming up as a separate, on a separate building code to take care of the driveway. The city staff now said there, with public notification of DADU to residents, within 500 foot, this DADU is out of sight from the public. And my contention is, I'm the only person that's going to object to it. I'm the only person it affects. There's several, there's probably 20 houses within 500 feet, and I'm the only one that's got them 10 feet from my backyard and looking into my backyard and also into my small 700 square foot house. So I just want to bring that up to you, that I feel somewhat discriminated against by that, by that, even though it may not be so, I can feel that way. There's a two-door public entrance at that point, and what I'm worried about is that every time somebody walks down that sidewalk to go into their, their public entrance, I have to look away or either look them down if I'm sitting on my back porch, because I'm looking right at them as they walk to within 15 or 20 feet of me and then turn and go in the other door. And that's the part that I'm really objecting to, and I want people to understand why. Now, I've given you a handout. There's some other points, and if you'll read them, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Bridget Reeves, and I'm with the Lighthouse Mission Ministries, and I'm just, I wanted to give you an update as we reached the end of 2018, and we're about five, six weeks into the severe weather shelter at Fountain Community Church now, and things have been going well there. They have been housing a 20 to 45 women nightly at Fountain Community Church. For the majority of December, we were up in the high 30s, low 40s there. They've also been housing some families there on a nightly basis, so I think that regularly it's been about two families with kids there nightly. So in addition to that, at the Drop-In Center, I mentioned, I think back in November, that we had been seeing some significant increases in numbers, and just wanted to mention at the end of December, we were on average during that month, we saw a 50% increase in our numbers during the month of December. Some days, as much as 65% increase in our numbers on, for the people that are staying there on a nightly basis, that's not counting the people that come during the day that don't stay at night. And so at the end of the month of December, we were upwards of, in the 150 to 160 range, compared to the previous year, we were around 100, so pretty significant. Those, those increases, though in the beginning of the month, they're slightly smaller, smaller, so right now, we are at about a 20, 25% increase from last year. The uptick is already beginning for this month. We continue to look for another location, acknowledging that the location that we're in is not, not ideal long-term and not fit for this many people, and there's such a need in our community, as shown just in our numbers itself. And I also wanted to thank Councilmember Dan Hamel for coming down and visiting the mission and going on a tour, and just wanted to put out there to any, anybody on the council or anyone else here, if there is an interest to come down, walk through the mission, if you haven't done that in the past, open invite to come down. You can schedule a time with myself, with Hans, we'd love to walk around. It can be as short or as long as you'd like it, just give us your timeframe, just to see kind of what's happening there and all the different shelters and everything that are going on. But we also want to just thank you for all the work that you're doing in the community with Winter Haven opening and other things going on in the community and the efforts that are being taken on your behalf. So, thank you so much.
The next three speakers are Emmanuel Felteos, Rachel David, and James Peterson.
My name is Emmanuel. I am a current resident of Winter Haven, and I just want to say that as far as I've seen of the homeless situation in, well, in Bellingham, you have, you know, a population that certainly have a lifestyle choice, that they like to live outside, and I say let them be. You have a lot of people with serious mental health issues that are going to require a lot of serious resources to deal with. You've got a lot of people who are staying at the shelter, and it's a good place because it provides them with stability and certainly structure in their day. And you also have a place that just opened up called Winter Haven, which is unique because it provides people like residents like me with a place that we can call our own, one, and two, that place is a tent in the winter, outside, which is awesome. We've got eight or nine people, I think, right now, staying there. That's going to present to us a lot of challenges for us to stay warm and comfortable during the winter, but we're up to it. We're coming together as a small community, and that's going to make us stronger as individuals when we eventually move on to permanent housing. That's going to make Winter Haven stronger as a community when more people start feeding in as we move out into permanent housing, and that's just going to help Bellingham as a community, and hopefully take pressure off of the Lighthouse Mission, take pressure off of other resources, and put those resources where they're more needed. So, thank you very much, and let's really put our backs behind this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel LeVall. I'm a resident at Winter Haven. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for Winter Haven. It is my home now, not something I expected. I am a member of Bellingham, the community itself. When this happened, I was terrified I was going to get run off of, out of Bellingham because I became part of that stigma, I'm homeless. And it, like Emmanuel said, it is the middle of winter, which is difficult. And then there's Winter Haven, and I now have a home. I have that hope that I'm going to have permanent housing, which is always the goal, and with the community's help with that, getting that permanent housing for us so that there's one less homeless person, you know, and that's going to help our homeless in general, and I think it's going to be a great benefit. I think this is a great step, and I'm really happy that Bellingham is taking that initiative and, and trying to find more, trying to do more for us because we're not all drug addicts, we're not all out here because we want to be. Some of us are circumstantial, and this isn't, you know, this is just a stepping stone for us, and, and I'm just blessed to have Winter Haven and Jim Peterson to have done this, and you guys are supporting this, and this means a lot to, to the residents here. You know, this is life-changing, life-saving for us. So I just want to say thank you, and thank you for Winter Haven.
Hi, Jim Peterson, 210 Lottie Street. God, it feels good to say that. I really didn't plan that, but that's pretty cool, isn't it? That I live in your back, right in your backyard. So, I just want to thank the Planning Department, Rick Sempler, Chief Police, City Council, the mayor, and everybody for putting up with me for the last year and nine months, and for all the hard work that it took to get to where we're at now. As I listen to Emmanuel and Rachel talk, it is life-changing for them, and we've only been there four days, and I've seen their lives change already. We already have people reaching out to us wanting to know, they want to come live in a room that they got and stuff, so we're probably going to have our first person that's in Winter Haven moving out into permanent housing already. We're really working hard at this, but it's not me, it's not Homes Now. These residents, they're just doing an awesome job. All we had to do was give them the basics, place to cook, place to go to the bathroom, place to throw the trash away, and a place to sleep that they were safe. They can leave in the day and leave their stuff in their tent, and they don't have to worry about when they come back, because it's still going to be there. It's there. They're safe. They know they're safe at night. They know nobody's going to come bother them at night. They don't have to worry about hiding in the woods so the police can't find them or the meth heads can't find them. And to me, it's all I ever wanted to do was help people. Just give, just support them, not hold their hands, not babysit them. I tell them that probably 100 times a day, I'm not here to babysit you. You're all adults, you know what you need to do, just do it. We're just providing you a place to be. And we've had tremendous outreach from the community, from businesses. Right now, we have 161 volunteers signed up to volunteer at Winter Haven, so we're starting to cover shifts, and it was funny, we had volunteers show up today, and there were no residents on site. And they go, "What do we do?" And I said, "Just sit here. There's nothing to really do, we can talk." There was more staff on site than there was residents. And we're getting ready to do our second round of interviews Thursday, and then we have 10 spots open up right, so far right now, and we'll probably fill them up on Friday. And then, it's going to change the dynamics, but the reason we did it the way we did it, because they've set the tone now. This is what the tone of Winter Haven is going to be, so the next residents to come in will follow that tone. So, it was a smart decision for us, and I just want to thank you all for your support. And I invite you all to come down. I thank those that came down for our ribbon cut, and it was pretty awesome to watch the residents cut the ribbon. So, thank you all, and come out and visit in your backyard sometime.
One more speaker listed, Jonah Longhorn.
Hi, I'm Jonah. How, how's everyone going, doing? So, I'm a citizen of Bellingham. I'm sure most of you have already seen my face, you already know me from around town and everything. I want to say that I'm really pleased with Jim Peterson and Homes Now and, and all the people who are putting forth an effort into making sure people can be housed. I want to say that this is, it restored my hope in the country, it restored my, it restores my hope in the city, and it restores my hope in my faith and, you know, the, the state as well, and I, I'm really proud of what we're accomplishing, and I, I think this is just the beginning of something great, and I think we can continue through this process, and obviously, through everybody's speech, it sounds like there is an issue with our homeless crisis or homeless problem in Bellingham and probably across the country as well that I, I don't even know of, but I want to say that I'm, I'm glad that we're doing something about it, and that I'm, I, I hope that we continue to put forth continuous effort into doing, continuing things. I also wanted to say that there are acts, resources that we should be tapping into for, for the people, like reopening the, the recovery center that was the Rainbow Recovery Center, things like that, for traumatized veterans or people who are having problems with drugs or people who are having problems with, I know that the Leopold just closed recently, and so we might see more homeless elderly, and that, that would be a problem too. So, I, I'm very happy with what we're doing right now with Winter Haven, and I volunteered there, but I, I'm coming as a representative of a citizen, as a citizen of the, the resident of the town. I want to say thank you for helping us with, with this and making, making sure that people are being housed and that people care, and the last thing I guess I got to say is there's, I know that there's openings for a place to live for people, but they need, they need people to show them that they are worthy and have value and that they are not bad people and that, you know, that their struggle is our struggle, and we, we share this together. So I think we should do everything we can to show that as human beings and as citizens and whatever else you want to call us all, as people, we care for each other. And I just want to say thank you for having me, and I'm a little nervous today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers that signed up? Anyone else wishing to address council this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and, okay, great. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and do our committee report outs. Today, the Committee of the Whole is the only committee that met, so I'll report out on that. We have five items during the Committee of the Whole today. The first one was mayor's reappointment of Sharon Rice as Hearing Examiner for the City of Bellingham. Council considered the reappointment of Sharon Rice to the position of Hearing Examiner for City of Bellingham. In accordance with municipal code, the position of Hearing Examiner is to be reappointed by the mayor with concurrences of not less than four members of the City Council for a term of two years. Her new term would expire on January 26th, 2021. This afternoon, this afternoon committee moved to approve, to recommend approval of the reappointment. That motion carried 7-0, and I so move.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. Second item today was a bid award for Cordada Safe Routes to School, funded Aldridge Road ES-0531, bid 68B-2018. The project includes installation of new pedestrian and bicycle facilities along the east side of Aldridge Road in two locations in order to complete the Tier One sidewalks and bike lanes between Northwest Road and Cordada Elementary School. The city received 15 bids, which were publicly opened on December 18th, 2018. Strider Construction was the responsible bidder who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $629,814, including any applicable Washington State sales or use tax. The engineer's estimate was $836,582. This afternoon, committee moved to recommend approval of the bid award. That motion carried 7-0, and I so move.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. Our third item was an addendum to the inter-local cooperation agreement among Wacom County, the City of Bellingham, and the Port of Bellingham regarding a coordinated approach to funding economic development activities. In 2011, Wacom County, the City of, of Bellingham, and the Port of Bellingham, also referred to as the Parties, successfully joined their funding resources on a multi-year basis to increase efficiency in coordination of economic development activities. The Parties have jointly and continually agreed to fund the Western Washington University's Small Business Development Center since 2011, and in 2015, decided to market, sorry about that, there we go, Wacom County, including the creation of the Choose Wacom website. The Parties continue their collaboration to fund Western Washington University's Small Business Development Center and expanded program operated by the Economic Development Director at the Port of Bellingham. This addendum extends the contract by two years and provides additional special project funding from the county's EDI program. This afternoon, committee moved to recommend approval of the addendum to the inter-local agreement. That motion carried 7-0, and I so move.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. Our fourth item was an inter-local agreement with the Port of Bellingham for the construction of a boathouse for the Salish Star and Morage. The city and the Port of Bellingham have negotiated an agreement to share the costs for construction of a boathouse for the Salish Star. The port has also agreed to provide a mortgage for the Salish Star at no cost to the city. The Parties will share the costs for ordinary maintenance and repairs to the boathouse. This afternoon, committee moved to recommend approval of the inter-local agreement. That motion carried 7-0, and I so move.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. Our fifth item this afternoon was City Council Reorganization. Our fifth item this afternoon was city council reorganization. Council executed the following procedures: nomination and election of officers, appointments to council committees, and other council assignments. City council appointed Dan Hamel as council president, Michael Lillquist as council president pro tem, and Gene Knutson as mayor pro tem. Council appointed Pinky Vargas as finance, personnel, and economic development committee chair, Gene Knutson as public works and natural resources committee chair, Michael Lillquist as parks and recreation committee chair, April Barker as planning and community development committee chair, Terry Bornham as public safety committee chair, and Hannah Stone as justice committee chair. This afternoon, committee moved to recommend approval of those appointments in their entirety. Motion carried seven-zero, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven-zero. I will now entertain a motion for approval of the December tenth, 2018, regular city council meeting minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven-zero. Michael, pardon me, Councilmember Lillquist?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, we also have ex officio appointments. Do those need to be handled in an official way this evening?
Is the microphone on?
I'm sorry.
We also made some ex officio appointments. Do we need to make a motion on those tonight?
Well, I mean, you could make, I assume everybody has this handout. You could just make a motion adopting the assignments that are listed in here. Just do one motion for everything.
If there's no objection, I would like to move that we adopt the ex officio and other council assignments as indicated in this handout and since discussed this afternoon.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries seven-zero. Older new business. Councilmember Vargas.
I just wanted to recognize, we talked this afternoon about Winter Haven opening on Saturday and thanking the staff and everybody for all their work on it, but just to let the public know if they want to get involved, that they do have a Facebook page, and every day, they list on their Facebook page things that they need. So if you want to participate in any way, that's a way you can know how you can help.
Thank you. Any other items for older new? Seeing none, we'll move on here. Executive session report. We had one item this afternoon, this was potential litigation, claims number 2018-44, 2018-45, and 2018-48. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter. This was for information discussion, no actions were taken. Mayor's report.
Good evening, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. Only have a reappointment to the tourism commission of Sarah Holliday and Ed Bennett, that's for your information, but I do need approval on the next three, which are the mayor's reappointment of Jenny Cottrell to the Bellingham Arts Commission.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. The mayor would also like to appoint Ken Hanna to the design review board. Looking for your approval for that as well.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. And the last one is the mayor's reappointment of Mike Estes to the planning and development commission.
Move approval. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Sure. Sorry, let me back up here. Councilmember Lillquist?
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Heinrich.
Sorry, I talked to Mr. Heinrich earlier under the mayor's report. What we have right now at the federal level is a massive shutdown that's leading to enormous problems across this country with paychecks and parks and everything in between, and I asked Mr. Heinrich to address when and how he sees that potentially affecting city functions.
Thank you, Mike. I forgot to mention that. So I think right now, our concern is the potential impact. So it's been, I think, seventeenth day is today perhaps, and from a city perspective, we haven't had the type of impact that other communities have, some that are maybe adjacent to a national park or something like that. But what I would say, and I think there's a good example in the agenda today, the Safe Routes to School, that's a federal grant program. Should this continue on? I think the potential is that we would see delays in those types of projects moving forward in terms of, you know, the grant-making process itself, if there's permits required from a federal standpoint. I'm thinking of perhaps like the Army Corps of Engineer, which we already know is a very lengthy process, even when they're fully operating and staffed. So I think right now, because we're very early in this shutdown process, the impacts aren't quite as clear, and we certainly haven't felt them, like I said, other communities have. But should it continue to drag on, we certainly could see the potential impacts and what that looks like. Will certainly be lack of programs or certainly delays in things like approving our permits.
Okay. Great. All right, consent agenda.
Move approval.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven-zero. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 22127, an ordinance of the city of Bellingham, Washington, accepting the donation of real property known as Cordada Park Wetland A.
Move third and final.
Gene Knutson?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Hannah Stone?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
April Barker?
Aye.
Terry Bornham?
Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven-zero.
Is there any other business before the council this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.